I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Southwest Licking Board of Education to order. It is January 18th at 6:00 PM. We're in the Board of Education meeting room. We'd like to recognize all of our visitors here and online. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. If you would all stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing as we have a special singing of the Star Spangled Banner afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. That was amazing.
Thank you guys.
Mr. Jones, can you call the roll please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zany.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. Public participation, were there any? We need a motion for an adoption of the agenda, please. Motion to adopt agenda.
Second.
Yes.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Some presentations this evening.
You can pop up on your chair if you need to.
Mr. Mark Bobo from the Ohio School Board Association.
Thank you very much. That's a terribly hard act to follow. But thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. Again, my name is Mark Bobo and I serve as the Director of Member Relations for the Ohio School Board Association. Thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to be here tonight. Tonight I have that wonderful opportunity to recognize the contribution of school board members in what can be oftentimes a thankless job. This responsibility is placed squarely on the shoulders of men and women who serve on our public school boards throughout America. And this responsibility is exemplified by the leaders in this room tonight. As you serve the community of Southwest Licking, thank you for your dedication and leadership and thank you for all that you do. It goes without saying, our world is changing and the needs of our students are changing. So therefore, the needs of board members are also changing. And in order to continue to be a relevant resource to those who govern our public schools, OSBA is making a concerted effort to align our decisions and our work and our resources to meet the needs of our board members. So that may, so that you mean we can continue to support you as you support 1.8 million students who walk the hallways of our public schools. It goes without saying that the role of public school board members cannot be emphasized enough. You play an intricate role in the complex, challenging, and ever-changing process of educating our youth. And so tonight, we want to express our heartfelt appreciation to you for your unwavering commitment to education and the well-being of our students. That is truly commendable. Your tireless efforts in making crucial decisions, advocating for our children, and fostering a positive learning environment does not go unnoticed. Again, thank you for allowing OSBA to support you in your endeavors as you lead Southwest Licking Local School District. We appreciate the opportunity and please let us know how best we can serve your board leadership needs. January is School Board Appreciation Month and we wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to come and thank you personally for your continued dedication to the community. On a personal note, good to see John and Roger again. Looking forward to working with you all intimately as we serve together in the central region. On a much more personal note, my family and I just recently moved out here to Patascola. And so, I hope this is not being recorded.
It is, actually.
Awesome. We're part of the Licking Heights community. Looking forward to our transition to the community. And it's, we're looking forward to being a great support to the work that's already happening in Southwest Licking. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
It's good to see a very full house. I'm sure they can just hear about me. Thank you all for allowing me this opportunity. Again, if there's anything that I can do to be of assistance to you as a board, please let me know. Thank you all again.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming, Mark.
All right, and now we have some building updates. Do we start with Kirkersville or the list? Kirkersville, Ms. Werman?
Good evening. Wanted to take a few minutes, kind of share all the good things that are going on in Kirkersville. Obviously, you saw one of those already, but they'll get another opportunity here. All right, let me make sure I do this correctly. Which one did I point at yet?
You got it.
It worked?
Yep.
Try it again. Nope, I guess I got control of the website.
All right, that's okay. Go for the first one there. First thing I'd like to talk a little bit about is our character traits and our character trait assemblies through our social-emotional learning program called Character Strong. We have an assembly each month. It's kind of nice. Well, it is kind of nice because we're at the middle school. We have that nice big gym. We can bring the whole building in there. And then we recognize two students from each classroom that represent the character trait for that month. And all the character traits are listed there. They come down, they get their picture with our cool cat. I know you got to meet him last year. Unfortunately, couldn't make it this evening. But they come down, they get their picture with the cool cat, they're honored with a certificate, and then they get to play a little game in front of all their peers. They really love that. And so it's nice to have that. And then each week, we do the golden ticket drawings. We recognize two students, maybe three, depends upon how it goes that week from each class. Again, that's doing a good job on the day-to-day basis. So we're really promoting that positive behavior every day throughout the week. They come down, they're recognized. Again, you'll see that in the bottom left there. We take their picture, put it on our Facebook page. They're getting one of our cool cat bracelets, a pencil, and a cool cat sticker again. Just promoting that positive stuff that's going on. Each day, I also do an announcement that talks about the character trait for the month. Could be a quote from someone famous, could just be, how can we, you know, show others respect today? So it's really kind of a cool thing that we got going on with Kirkersville in that social-emotional learning realm. Next one for me, please. Next one, we've done some field trips. We had each grade levels either gone or will be going. We had our kindergarten students with the Van Buren Anchors, again, local community. We appreciate them having us out, as well as Lynn's for our first grade. They went there, see some activities along the bottom, had a really good time. Our second grade has partnered with the works through a grant. They came out and actually presented in the bottom right there to our second grade students. And then our second graders, I want to say, in the next two weeks are going to go to the works and have a tour there and do some different activities with them. Third grade will be going here with Mrs. Haynes downtown to the Symphony, and that's supposed to be next week as well. So a lot of things. We'll also have some trips in the spring. Typically, they'll go to either the zoo, COSI. Our third grade loves to go into town, do the town walk, or how we would like to call that. We're going to work a little bit, try to even do Kirkersville. Maybe place some flags at a cemetery there, or some of that type of thing. I know we're not out there now, but we're still part of that community and we want to start to build that back up. So Mrs. Betts has talked about getting hold of someone from Kirkersville to maybe go out there and actually see where we are. So, next one for me, please. Connection Club, up and running. Love it. They're doing a lot of great things there. Each month, at least, they meet, they do different activities. We did the pumpkins down there for Halloween. We did snowmen, all kinds of turkeys around that time. It's a great opportunity for some of our students with disabilities to be around some, get some peer interaction. We have peer mentors that come down, work with them, build those friendships. And the best part about that is you see that carry over to recess and to other parts of the building. So it's really, really cool. We had the Connection Club tailgate put on by Mr. Davis and his department for all schools. Kirkersville was a part of that there. They really enjoyed that. And we are actually going to be taking a trip, our Connection Club, to the Better Together Plenazium here. I think it's in February. So we're really excited to, again, work, have those mentors, those peer models, working with our kiddos and building those relationships. So it's an exciting thing to see. Next one, Community Connections. Lot of stuff going on at Kirkersville connecting with the community. We had fire safety for K-2. They came out, presented to each classroom, talked about fire safety. And then we had a fire truck, see down there in the bottom right, out there for the kids to go out and check out. Always appreciate them coming out and doing that. They do that each year for us. So it's really nice for them to come and talk to our kids, teach them a lot about fire safety. 12 Days of Giving, something that's important that we do right before our winter break. We collect different things that we talk with the lead center. What things do you need to help our families in our own community? We collect those things and we drop them off to help, just help those that are in need. And then Watch Dogs. I know I talked about this last year at Kirkersville. Still have a big participation. We had to cut it to a half day because we have so many dads that want to be a part of it. But that allows everyone to come in. So they come in either in the morning until about 1 o'clock, or they come from 11 to 3. Always want to give them that opportunity to see lunch. They love opening up all those different things and seeing all the kids in that organized chaos, as many dads call it when they come in there. But it's a great program. Again, they're giving some of our kiddos that needed breaks throughout the day. They take them for movement breaks. They play games with them. Just, you know, that positive mentorship is really, really important. So we're excited to have that. We just sent out an email to open it up for dads that would like to do it again. So that, we want to give everybody an opportunity before winter break. We think we got all the dads that wanted to do it signed up. So those few spots that are still open, we sent that back out for anyone who would love to do it again. So, again, I talked about that works great. We're excited for that. And we also talked about our, you know, our third graders, again, those community partnerships that we are building as well. One more slide there. Kirk is a great place to work. Couple of things that we have going on up there. Yes, that is me in a woody onesie. I never thought I would do that, but thanks to Mrs. Cahill, I guess. I am in that. So we had our Halloween, our harvest parties. Kids were able to dress up. That's my buddy Sahir. He dressed up like me that day. In the middle there, we did a twin day. We did not tell Mr. Be Rad, who was our custodian, that we were going to do this. And everyone showed up in their gray sweatshirt or t-shirt and jeans and brown boots and their black hats, just like Mr. Be Rad. So he's in such an important part of our building that doesn't get as much recognition as he deserves. And so we really wanted to show that we appreciate him. So we wanted to do that for him. The top right there, we had a staff outing for Christmas. A lot of people turned out for that, so it was great. Bottom right there, this was an interesting one. So I had never seen the movie Mean Girls. So I finally, again, was convinced by Mrs. Cahill, thank you so much, to watch that. And so then we had to wear pink one day, so we did that as well. The middle one there on the left might be one that you may have heard of. We had an elf on the shelf at Kirkersville throughout the last few days before winter break. That went over really well. We have a lot of good things going on there. Mrs. Haynes, our crossing guard, does a lot of, on Fridays, that's her special outfit with her comb. So lots of good things going on at Kirkersville. The staff is phenomenal. They're always willing to do things to make it fun for the kids and the kids really, really enjoy it. Next slide, please. Upcoming events. Got a lot of things still coming here in the spring. Rights Read Week, we're going to do the Reading Olympics that lines up with the Olympics this summer, which also lines up with our carnival. It's one of our biggest events that our PTO puts on. They're going to be the Olympic theme as well. I believe it's March 2nd, so if you're not busy, feel free to stop by Kirkersville and we'll have a whole lot of things going on there. We do have some Springfield trips, like I said, maybe to the zoo, COSI, and as well, again, within town there. Spelling Bee, our third graders really look forward to this, so they're going to be taking part of that. Same with Battle of the Books, that's put on by Mrs. LaJune's department, her team. Kids really like that. They come in, read the books, we ask questions. I actually get to be one of the readers at the end, so it's really, really an exciting time. Connection Club events, again, we'll keep those going. Also, tomorrow, weather pending, is the big kindergarten Q&amp;U wedding. We've had two people already mention it that I talked to today. They're concerned that if there's a snow day, what are we going to do? It will be rescheduled for Monday. So we bring all of our kindergartners into the gym and Q&amp;U, we have a little wedding. I have a thing that I read off and kids get like little snacks. It's a cool little thing. And then, also, one thing I forgot to put up there as well, breakfast with a buddy coming up, March-April. We have the kiddos bring in somebody. We give donuts, breakfast activities then, that they can do at the tables. And just something for them to bond, spend a little time with their students. Next one, please. Kirkersville Choir. Again, we just have a small sample of that. We really appreciate them coming out. Families, I want to thank you for taking some time this evening and bringing them up here. They are going to sing one more song and then we're going to be all wrapped up unless you have any questions.
What time is the Q&amp;U wedding?
The Q&amp;U wedding is at 12:30 tomorrow in the Kirkersville Gym. And if it's, again, if we happen to not make it, it will be Monday at 12:30. I already talked to the kindergarten teacher.
I may just show up. I love weddings.
Feel free to. It will be a good time, so. All right, Mrs. Haynes, thank you guys again. I appreciate it. We're going to let them come on out and we're going to sing one more song for you before we head on out. Thank you very much for allowing me to present. Parents, thank you again. If you're ready, I don't think you need them. Can we have a second just to get them out?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Haynes. That was wonderful.
Thank you. That was awesome. Take care. Run while you can.
Want to tell Mark who you can go to? Mr. Bobo, you're welcome at any point you would like to. Yeah, there's another group. And now we'll make a trade and we'll get, Mr. Pratt? Is that right?
Yep.
All right. Wow, those cool cats were awesome. Sounded great. And thanks for the opportunity for us to share with you guys and now we can move on to Watkins Intermediate School. The hardest thing is really choosing which highlights to share with all of you. And kind of like last year, I'm going to give this opportunity to a few of our staff members and share some of the great things going on in our building. We're going to first start with STEM. So Mrs. Lisa Clever's going to come up and she's going to share about STEM and then kind of transition into the WIS bizarre that we just finished up in December. And some student celebrities.
Hello, I'm Elisa Clever, STEM teacher at WIS. And thank you for the opportunity to highlight some of the wonderful things happening at WIS in the STEM classroom. Next slide, please. Our course covers four main areas: computer programming, engineering, design challenges, robotics, and 3D modeling. These areas connect to the middle school pre-engineering and high school engineering, robotics, and computer programming courses. Our curriculum is designed to expose all intermediate students to opportunities available to them if they choose to progress through the STEM pathways in our district.
You can just say next slide.
Okay. The STEM curriculum also makes connections to the core content curriculums at our grade level. We make connections to science, math, the humanities, and reinforce many concepts such as circuits, economics, Newton laws, figurative language, and anything else we can try to make connections to. Next. The STEM course also focuses on teamwork. Specifically, students reflect on communication, collaboration, respect, and work ethic as they work in teams. Classroom protocols help reinforce and promote these soft skills. Next. Students explore computer programming as they create animations and video games. They even use basic knowledge of circuits and conductivity to create controllers to play their video games. Next. Students program robots as they use logic and basic programming concepts to complete challenges. Next. And students are also introduced to 3D modeling as they create their own wild and wonderful creations that are then printed on a 3D printer. Next. And then for the last two years, we also have been partnering with Frau Kessler and her high school German students. And they've led some of our classes in the Sparks Program. And this program introduces students to the German language while exploring STEM-related concepts. So not only are students exposed to a language they might decide to study, but they're also paired with positive high school role models during this collaboration. Next. And another success worth noting is the creation of an adaptive unified arts class at WIS. This was truly a result of all parties working together to create the best learning experience for our students. And the class provides a more sensory-friendly opportunity to explore all unified arts with peers in a meaningful way. And the staff collaborated with Mrs. Taggart, Mr. Pratt, all of our administration, Mrs. Yost, all the unified arts teachers. It was just really, I was really proud to be part of it because it was one of the, everyone just came together. And when that happens, it was great. It really has been working well for our students. And next. And then finally, for our last highlight, I wanted to present some fifth graders who will talk about the Winter Bazaar. This is the third Winter Bazaar we've had at Etna and the Intermediate School. And I'll let the students tell you about it. Can I take this off for them? Okay. Next slide.
So our group...
It's on. It's on.
Our groups, we started by brainstorming different strategies on how to lower the cost of our product and how we could choose a product that appeals to our customers. Our groups then asked ourselves questions about production materials, startup costs, and how much we should charge to make a good profit. We also suggested and voted on a charity to donate all profits to. We then began production by making a prototype of our project. Then we divided up the labors. And using a lot of our work and hot glue, we worked together to make as many products as we could.
Then we created digital ads to market to our students in the school. We also made storefront signs to advertise our business on the day of the bizarre.
Finally, on the day of the bizarre, fifth grader, fifth grade students sold their product to fourth grade students in the morning. Community members were invited to shop in the afternoon. And we raised $2,251.21 for the Eli Effect. The Eli Effect means a lot to us and the students for our school. We are proud to honor Eli and the work the organization does to help kids in our community. It means a lot for us to honor our friend.
And so if you didn't hear, the students voted on the charity and they, by an overwhelming margin, chose the Eli Effect and it really just meant a lot to them. So we want to thank everyone that donated, all the parents that donated items, all the parents that sent in money to help buy the wonderful crafts they made and just supported us in any way. So it was wonderful to be part of again.
We're going to transition now to Melissa Luckett. She's going to share about the Rocks Program. She's going to share how it impacts us in our building. Melissa also is part of our Warrior Leaders Club, who presented the last time we presented.
Hi. That too was a tough call. My name's Melissa Luckett. I teach fourth grade humanities at Watkins. A few years ago, I was approached by our school principal at the time to attend a Rocks facilitator training. I jumped on the opportunity because student leadership is a passion of mine. Rocks, in a nutshell, is a 20-week program that teaches young girls how to stand up for themselves, how to have confidence in standing up for themselves, how to empower themselves, lead their own friendships, lead their own relationships, lead their own learning, and be productive, independent, confident women. Next slide, please. After my training and a couple of other Southwest Licking teachers, we chose teacher-recommended girls as well as their family recommendations, about 12 to 15 girls. Each facilitator picks, or sorry, not picks. Each facilitator has a group of girls that is not in their grade level content so that girls see their facilitator as a confident woman, someone that they can go to in need, someone who's not their teacher. The list of things on the right are the things that the girls learn in their 20-week program. It's an honor to see them from beginning to end and see their confidence grow, even in our small group. Next slide, please. I just wanted to share some ways that Rocks supports our girls, but also ways that we can all support our daughters, nieces, sisters. Rocks takes the responsibility of being a positive role model for girls seriously. Their relationship to the body images, the roles ensures that we project girls see. And it's important for that to be taken seriously. It's important for us to focus on internal strengths rather than external. We tend to, as a society, go for external appearances when it comes to girls and women. And so actively trying to focus on the internal is important. Modeling and teaching effective relationship skills. Teaching girls in our Rocks group how to communicate with their friends, how to solve problems, how to communicate with boys, how to communicate with wanted and unwanted attention, and the healthy and appropriate way to stand up for yourself. Next slide, please. At the beginning of each Rock- At the beginning of each Rocks year, girls will take a, what's called a Girls Index. It's simply just a survey to check in on their social-emotional needs, and they take the same survey at the end of the year. Some findings that were just released last week: 39% of girls say that they are sad or depressed at least four days a week. And this tripled this in our data. It tripled from fifth to sixth grade. So starting Rocks in the fourth grade is important to try to grab those girls and help that number decrease. 79% of girls feel like they're going to explode because they have so much pressure on them, with school, with friendships, with relationships, with family. However, there was good news out of all this. If girls felt that they were supported in their relationships with other girls, if they felt supported by the adults at school, Rocks, teachers, whomever, and if they felt like they belonged in their school, their percentages of feeling sad or depressed or like they were going to explode were much lower. Next slide, please. And finally, how do we know it's working? I apologize for these being a little blurry. But 92% of our girls, there's a 92% increase in girls' development of effective safety strategies after participating, feeling safe in their own skin, feeling safe with relationships, feeling safe standing up for themselves verbally and physically. With cyberbullying, 66% decrease in girls participating in bullying and cyberbullying. 83% of our girls reported that Rocks is one of the things that they like most about school. It helps them feel connected and involved. 86% of our girls in Rocks, excuse me, have significantly higher levels of confidence and self-esteem at the end of their 20-week course. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, Joe. Joe, can we grab a picture real quick with Eli's family and the kids? Can you grab them? The ones that are leaving? No, can you grab them so they don't leave? And get a picture? Stop them! And then we get, if we could get the kids, if we could get the kids and, yeah, Mrs. Clever.
There's an eighth grade basketball game.
Okay. Yeah, if we could get the kids, guys, and Mrs. Clever too up there? Get a picture, Mrs. Clever, where are you hiding? Where'd she go? There she is. Well, so, thank you.
She would've been here, but she's keeping the books for the basketball.
All right, get on in there, kids. You guys are at kind of.
Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
The WIS families, have you done this?
We just have one more.
Oh, no. Sorry, sorry. I was gonna speak too soon.
And the Rocks is just part of our SEL program, but obviously a very, very impactful program that we have in our building. It's moved over to middle school. We're still looking for continuing trainers. Our last highlight is gonna be Rebecca Holloway coming up, who is our second or staff of the quarter. She's gonna tell you a little bit about LEGO Robotics.
All right. So LEGO Robotics is a program that I was introduced to about 10 years ago, and I am overly thankful that it's supported here. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the program, a little bit about the students that are in it, and kind of our history here. So go ahead and next slide. Oh, he says it's working now. Yay! All right, so our LEGO Robotics program, we actually compete in First LEGO League, which is a worldwide program. Students start at the beginning of August. They're in teams of usually between four and 10 students, and they spend about two and a half to three months putting together an innovation project on the topic of the year. This year, they're actually putting together, it's called Masterpiece, they had to use technology and art to promote a hobby of theirs, so that's kind of fun. They also, one thing that you may see a lot of is the robots. They create a LEGO robot. It's 100% Legos, no directions, all of their ideas. And then they have to program the robot to complete different missions on each season's competition board. All right. And as you can see, all of those components are here in First LEGO League. The one that is huge on the bottom, and I'm going to circle back to it, is core values because students work on all of these things, but throughout the whole season, they're also working on working together, communicating with others, making everything better around them. All right. So our mission, of course, is to support what's going on in the classroom. Students take the skills that they learn, and they get to use them, practice them, show them off, as they present in front of judges, in front of different organizations. I know that one team is going to be at the WIS staff meeting next week presenting their projects, so that'll be kind of cool. So students get to practice all of those skills that they're really trying to fine-tune in the classroom. All right, so a little bit of history. Back in 2017, we actually had our first First LEGO League team there, right there. They had no clue where we were gonna head off from there. 2019, I actually stood right in front of most of you, and I had a team with a LEGO board over here, and we described as they ran their robot because we got what I call the golden ticket to go to Worlds Festival, where we competed against teams from around the world. I have stories, we'll save them for another time. It was actually very phenomenal. 2020, of course, yeah, we'll call that our rebuild year. We actually weren't gonna have a season, but we had three eighth graders that said, hey, this is our last season. We really love this program, we want to be a part of it. And that's when I said, yes, as long as the fifth grader right there in the blue can be a part of the team. Happens to be my daughter. That team did more than they could ever imagine because those eighth graders shared with her all of the information about LEGO Robotics and the program and taught her, and now she is an eighth grader, and she's been sharing it with her team this season and actually several teams throughout her LEGO Robotics experience. All right. Last year, we actually opened up our program to intermediate also, hence today's Intermediate Club. We had always just invited sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but it is a worldwide program for fourth through eighth grade students, and we said, we're ready, let's bring on intermediate students. Had a phenomenal group of, actually a large group of students interested. We actually went to the parade, we held our tournament at WIS. It was phenomenal. The team there at the, on the bottom corner, they actually were our first team to qualify and compete at Worlds, no, sorry, at State. Worlds Festival was the golden ticket. At State last year. So that was a huge accomplishment because we didn't, we never were able to get there. And that brings me back to this core values. So remember, I said that there are all those components of LEGO Robotics. These kids are making their robot. They have to describe to judges their whole engineering of creating the robot and the missions. They have to do that innovation project, but then core values is the umbrella through everything. Core values is how are they discovering things? How are they celebrating? How are they including everybody? How are they impacting the program and their community? All right. And last year, we went to State first time, and right there, our team earned the Core Values Award. And I told the team that, I mean, A, I was so excited we went to State, but B, the Core Values Award, out of all of the awards, in my opinion, that's the best because I feel those are the skills that I want them to take outside of school, outside into the workforce, and really make an impact or difference. Here's this year. This is our second year in the Tascala Parade, a lot of fun. You can see that our group grew. We have a little bit under shy of 50 students this season. We had seven teams, a lot of fun. I'm not using my notes, they're all here. We hosted the kickoff for Central Ohio at the Intermediate, so there were other teams that showed up, and we kind of told them about LEGO Robotics. We hosted a scrimmage and a qualifying tournament at the middle school this year, a lot of fun. We had two intermediate teams actually advance. We had four compete at our tournament, two advanced on, which, that goes to districts. One more step, they'll be at State. Who knows? And those teams, one of those teams actually earned that Core Values Award at that tournament. So I'm like, yeah, we're putting our money, not only our word, shall we say, in the characters that we want to build. Our middle school teams, just plug this in, we actually competed at Newark City Schools on the sixth. All three of those teams also advanced on, and one of them did earn the Core Values Award. Another one acquired the Champion Award. Yay! So our team is really representing quite loudly out in the public. So loudly that in the last year, I have had, that's even upside down, I have had schools, let's see, what were my list of schools? I have had Bexley, New Albany, Upper Arlington, Reynoldsburg, Delaware, Dublin, and Big Walnut. I've had representatives from each of those schools actually reach out to me and say, hey, how are you creating this program? I would really like to start something in our school district. So I couldn't be happier. And of course, it's the kids that are out there, too. So in the end, as I kind of hinted there, we have two intermediate teams still in tournament season. We have three middle school teams still in tournament season, and the next tournament is gonna be hosted by Newark City Schools. So if you are around Saturday the 27th, it opens to the public at 12:45, and that would be robot round. So have it in their auditorium, you can come in, sit in their nice comfy seats. They actually have TVs where you'll be able to see the robots in action. So with that, I thank you for your support, and do you have any questions about LEGO Robotics? Good luck. Yes? Thank you.
Thanks for sharing. And the WIS parents and families are more than welcome to leave at this point. We've got Mr. Davis with our bullying, harassment, restraint, and inclusion semi-annual report that's required.
Yep. So I believe you all have a copy of the report. The one area we want to focus on is the bottom of the report, which shows the first semester numbers. And as you can see, it's pretty similar to past semesters. The substantiated reports are down from the last couple actual years, and the rest of the numbers are pretty similar. Pretty standard report, but I'll take any questions if you have any. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Janelle, our project manager.
Good evening. Appreciate the board asking me to come back and talk to Dr. Perkins. I was gonna start with one of my fabulous jokes that I used to say, and unfortunately, the administrators took a vote and they said no. But I did get some yeses from the new ones. I don't think they've heard any, so I might lose one of those.
I thought they voted if you were gonna sing, too.
Singing.
Singing. When we start this, I'm gonna start with a recap of what we've done, move into some of the new builds, but please stop me anytime you have a question. Sometimes I get focused and I maybe miss the point that you want to see or talk about, so I'll try to move through these very, very quickly. Dr. Perkins did say I could take my time.
I said five minutes.
There's a, it matters. Pullback. All right, so we're summarizing that explore. These are some of the projects that we've taken care of here recently. Baseball's gonna open in the spring, the other two venues there have already opened, and we've had some varsity events there, JV events. Down in the lower right, we've done a lot of things to the athletic complex, too, from stadium seating to the new fence, the concession stand, the roof, the pavilion, the lights at both that and the soccer field areas, so a lot of improvements there. The one thing that we're still lacking at the new venues is the landscaping, and as you drive by, you might see that there are some bare spots here and there, but some of the projects kind of went a little longer than we anticipated, which made the planting or the final stage run a little long or close to the winter season. So we're gonna review that in the spring. We'll make sure that's taken care of, and you know, it's a good planting of grass out there. The building projects, obviously, it's great to see the kids that, you know, get to use these buildings and the wonderful things they're doing. The high school and the WIS building, it's been three years since we have opened those, so you know, time is just flying by. Aetna has opened up, and we have the Watkins built, so those are all in use. The one unfortunate thing that we have, though, is that zero of the buildings have been closed out, and I wanted to share that with you tonight. Again, these are Robertson projects, so we're meeting with them every other week. That is the school, myself, I mean, the OFCC, Garmin and Miller will be represented by GM, Hill International, and then Robertson. Some of the things that we're not closed out on, these are the items that we need to get settled. Then we can have, you know, broom ball or whoever we need to do to do the surveys and things that finally close this out, but at the Intermediate Building, the sound system, there's still an issue there. The terrazza floor has some scratches, things like that. High school, you can read through these, but we're not letting anything go. We're gonna make sure that we get what we pay for, and until that time comes, we're gonna continue to push those that need to finish to finish. So I don't know if there's anything on the list. There are a few other items that, I just didn't want to, you know, put a ton of things on there, but I wanted to highlight some of the things that you might have seen when you're visiting one of these buildings, but.
What is the reason for the delay?
And I guess I, I'm not sure what you mean by delay.
Is it manpower? Is it people disputing that they're gonna fix? Is it?
There's, publicly, I'll just say that Robertson needs to get their subcontractors to finish the job that they were hired to do.
Gotcha.
Getting some of the contractors to finish has been a little tough. It's always a little tough towards the end of a project because everybody wants to move on to the next one, and getting them back to fix the things. But these aren't things that need to be fixed. These are things that, you know, in order to close out, there's a contract that they signed to do with obligations. These are things that have not been finished from that three-year ago opening date, so again, it took about a year and a half to build, two years in some cases, so some of this has been worked on for a very long time. So it is very, very frustrating, and we are pursuing that. And again, Nathan Jones, the OFCC rep, we talk at least twice a week, he called me this morning, to discuss, you know, how we're gonna proceed to get these things finished. Eventually, there's gonna probably have to be, if they're not done, some litigation.
That was gonna be my next question. At what point do we just say we're done? Like, asking for when?
Right. Well, it's best to, if it's something that's been started by one contractor, to try to get them to finish because they know where they've left off and what the issues might be. But again, you make, I mean, you're stating a good question. So we do need to continue to try to get them done the way we should, but we are co-owners, so we have to convince the state that that's the best way to move forward, too.
Now, this is what's left. Have they done anything that's been on this list that's currently not on the list?
If it's on the list, it's not finished.
But were there things that were on the list prior that have been completed that they obliged?
Oh, certainly, certainly. Yeah. When we get towards the end of the project, we do what is a punch list. It includes items that maybe were put together incorrectly or that are missing. So this is the, after three years, we've litled it down to this small amount. So we've been working on these particular obligations for a while. One of the big ones, obviously, is the detention basin. We've had the Licking County Soil and Water involved with that. We're asking for a note from Robertson to clear us because we were given some, per se, gentle warnings by the Licking County Soil and Water to get things finished up. And so we don't want to have Robertson or whoever walk away, and then we're stuck dealing with Licking County Soil and Water. So we want at least what was supposed to be in the project finished, finished, so that we can say, hey, everything was done right. Anything that's come about is something new, and then we can attack that issue.
And we are holding about half a million dollars back in escrow for it, so it gets to the point we just need to give them 10-day notice, bring it in, use escrow to pay somebody else to get it done. Again, it's probably more like getting the state on board.
I point out the terrazza floor in the high school to anybody that's willing to listen.
Yeah. That's a tough one because the terrazza, obviously, it has, it's been, you know, the samples and things have been taken from a certain quarry at a certain time to try to match it. There's a lot of color variations. It's a little difficult, but we are taking a position on that that's not going away. Dr. Perkins is obviously pursuing that, and we'll make sure we get either it fits Dr. Perkins is obviously pursuing that, and we'll make sure we get either it fixed or we get some kind of money back.
Yep.
The bottom line, the certificate of contract completion has only been signed for Aetna Elementary. That's where everything has been completed. We're waiting all the paperwork, all the warranties, everything to filter through, and then ultimately that can be closed down. And then any money that's left, other districts can be split between us and the OFCC. The LFI money then can, we can move it. It basically comes freed up to move to other projects if we want to. So, good question. Well, obviously, we've had some issues, so we have changed our model. We've gone from CMR, a construction manager at risk, to a GC. Probably the biggest question, you know, when I was putting this together, is probably asking, why did we switch to a GC? The biggest reason is that we can have competitive bidding. And obviously, the board approves all these contracts, and you noticed that when we went out for Kirkersville and went out for the new K3 building, that we got really good prices back. And that was something that we were missing. So that was a great move on your behalf, led by Dr. Perkins, and I think that's allowed us to actually add to these buildings, things that we may not have had the opportunity to add. So, very positive. So let's take a look at Kirkersville. And some of this, I was disappointed some of the parents left because they might want to see what's been happening with Kirkersville. But some generic pictures, but this is the rendition that has been put out, and you can see there's quite a bit of changes to the front, and we're working through getting all that through a change order. But you can see that we're trying to take care of both the interior and the outside of that. And I'll try to run through some of the highlights very quickly. Again, stop me wherever you need to. So as we move inside, just backing up one, where it says Kirkersville Elementary, that is the new addition that we put on, and we put that on primarily because of security, but it does also open up other areas in the building for other uses. So as you walk in, this is, in your mind, you can kind of picture the Aetna Elementary where you come in the front doors, and there's a second set of doors. We're beyond the second set of doors right now. You would be locked between the two doors. You always can get out, but you would head into the office. But this is where the old office used to be, where the sign is. So we've added on to the front of it. But this is a very nice intro to the Kirkersville building. As we look at the building, some things have stayed the same. There are some changes. These are the 20 classrooms that are being renovated, remodeled. We'll take some, look at some of the things happening there. There are six classrooms that have restrooms. So we have a total of 26 classrooms. You can see where they're at. So the locations of the classrooms obviously haven't changed. But we have art, music, and also PE. This is new. It's going to be where the old office was. It's kind of added to the existing smaller workroom. So that's basically been, I guess, doubled in size. Small offices now come off the hallway. There was one door where, I'll show you a picture here in a few minutes, but we have three smaller offices there for whatever, you know, the administration deems necessary. Front desk, administration, nurses' office back there. Kitchen, same location, but major renovations. Cafeteria, same thing, there'll be changes there. The stage is undergoing total renovation. There were rooms there, there's continued to be rooms there. There'll be a lift, and there'll be new stair treads and so forth, so it is accessible. Technology now has a secluded room behind the classroom that we chopped off of the library. Obviously, there's the library. So the front entrance, again, I kind of showed you the front view, and you come right into the vestibule there, turn right, and then you can check into the building. So this is the general layout. Not a lot of changes, but there are a few. Restrooms, always very, very important. And I know that was a question. We have 16 total restrooms. I have a little graphic where they all pop up for you, so they're coming. The smaller Xs are individual restrooms, and the larger Xs are the group restrooms, and they're spread out. So you can see that we've added some. For the teachers' sake, the two there, the new teachers' area, are new and they've been enlarged. So, pretty nice facilities. And obviously, in the main office, there's one for the main office there, and that's where the nurses' office is located. All right, traffic flow. We've done some things there as you drive by, trying to give you a frame of reference, the State Route 158 there. You can see down towards the south side. This is where Ricky usually throws a punchline at, but anyways, this is where the parents are going to drop off, and there is a turnaround towards the end. So we've enlarged that whole side in terms of asphalt for parking and also for drop-off. This was land that we purchased prior to the construction, and we've now included that. So we'll see a picture. So parents will come in, they'll drop off, all of those doors, there'll be three doors that will have electronic locks, so they can drop off depending on how administration wants to do it along that entire sidewalk. Again, the parking's been enlarged on the location. Out front, buses, and that's changed in terms of appearance. Buses come in same way, and they run down through that and then exit. So it's really very similar, but again, we've had some increases in sizes in certain areas. Any questions about that? All right, very good. This is a before in the upper left and a new picture in the lower right. I did go back to some of the older pictures because of the snow and the sleet and the rain, they weren't real pretty. We do have asphalt down, we have the base coat. We're going to have the top coat come down in the spring, but you can kind of see what we've done. Some of the noticeable things, again, off to the south side or to the left in the bottom picture is that turnaround. But more importantly, along State Route 158, we've put a curb, so there's no longer any parking there. But you can see that we've enlarged the center area of the parking lot, and we can kind of show how that's going to work here in a second. This is the rear view. You can kind of see what we've done again. We've kind of pursued work right to the edge of the old kindergarten wing. From that point towards the dirt pile over onto the north side, you know, the playground, that type of thing, we still have to do in the spring. But you can see how things changed from before. We had modulators back there, all that's gone. Everything's been cleaned up. All right. Many people didn't know we had so much grass back there, but we go all the way down to the creek, and as a requirement through the Licking County Soil and Water, we did have to put a detention basin back there. It does tie into the stream down there below, but we tried to minimize the amount of space taken up. One of the nice things is, you can kind of see that there's substantial growth in that particular detention basin, and we haven't had any issues with that yet. This is the new addition in the front. I'm going to kind of run through these pictures relatively quick, kind of speed things up. This shows you the drop-off area with the new sidewalks. I wanted to give you perspectives if you haven't been out there. This is the parent side drop-off from the big round circle in the lower right, and then the top left is the one from the front entrance where the cars would be coming in. This is State Route 158 from the north and the south end, so you can see parking's been minimized. You can't park there. So I think that's going to make things very, very safe. Anyways, some of the things that we're doing to the building, many people knew that this particular area leaked substantially, needed to be tucked by, but what we decided to do was insulate everything to kind of warm everything up, but then also vinyl siding on top of it. So anytime you see some of that old brick and you see this blue stuff stuck to the building, there's going to be nice vinyl siding, or metal siding actually, aluminum siding going on top of that. These are some of the areas. That's the courtyard, the art room are all undergoing this addition. This is the room that I mentioned earlier. These are the small group rooms right outside. The center one used to be, I believe it was Jeff Hammond's entrance, so we've added two more. One of the really nice things, I have to give Casey credit for it because I kind of argued with it a little bit, but we are changing from that bright yellow to gray colors. That paint especially adhered to it, so it should stick around, but it does add a lot to the building. So there'll be, except in this one hallway here, there'll be three levels of color. And in between the three levels, that middle level, there'll be a tack strip on the top and the bottom outside all the doorways for display purposes. These are some of the other hallways, just to kind of show you what's been going on. Most of the work right now is above ceiling. We're going to have an above-ceiling punch by the architects probably within the next couple of weeks, which means we're really moving along, doing a really good job in that particular project. Too quick, it was probably another hallway, so not a big deal. They're just the main hallway. Tac strips down, color's coming, everything's getting cleaned up. Now, the floor is covered, so we have terrazzo in a lot of the portions of the building, so we want to make sure we keep that safe and not get scratched up. So Pepper has covered that to keep it in good condition. This is a classroom. Everything basically, after we went out to bed, we came back. Dr. Perkins obviously wanted some additional improvements, so everything basically was taken out of the room, and everything's going to come back new. The walls are getting painted with an accent color on the teaching wall, and then, as you can see, a Univet's there in a package. Univet delivers the heat. There'll be new lighting, new sound system, new symmetry, and I'll show you a picture in a second, right there. These are some of the new cabinets that have come in. They came in this week, probably by the next Friday unless something happens. The cabinets in sections, what we call A and B, will be probably installed. So moving along very, very quickly. Just to kind of highlight that 90% of the windows are replaced, except in the 2012 addition. Restrooms are being redone. The kitchen's being redone, the large fume hoods and additional appliances are being put in there, so we should have some nice heat offerings. We have work done to the ghost wall, what they call the ghost wall. And I took a long time doing this. There's actually only four windows in that room, but I thought a fifth might be funny, but apparently it's not. I really.
Those pictures are so creepy.
The wall's getting painted, and at the end of the project, we are going to come in and cover those pictures with new things. But I took a really long time, so I hope you appreciate that. Okay. Anyways, there are miles, Jeff can appreciate this, there's miles and miles of cables going throughout the building. The building will obviously be very high-tech. Students will have a lot of opportunities along with the teachers to have, you know, a very pleasant learning environment. So that pretty much brings us to the very last item, probably, a lot of people have an interest in that, is that the gym, that, you know, paper that was stuck to the wall is all coming down.
Yes.
And off the roof, you can kind of see what was behind it, that yellow block was behind it. Oop, going too fast. But unfortunately, no, I'm going forward. I got to go back. Unfortunately, we thought we were done. We were putting a new floor in, we're going to put, you know, essentially paint certain height, and then put a kind of a board where the old plaster was and put a new ceiling in. But we found out that whoever renovated the building, you can kind of see what I circled, they essentially had the ceiling hanging by which beams attached to the metal. The wood, obviously, is kind of a fire issue in a building, so we didn't want to put two sprinkler systems in that particular room, so we're tearing down the ceiling. As you can see, it's all coming down. It's in very nice shape. Not exactly sure what was going on, but it's going to get a paint, it's going to get sound boards along with the rest of the gym, so it should be a very nice venue. All right, let's move to the task of the south fork, but I will take quick questions on Kirk. We are on time, we are on schedule. We plan to have substantial completion done in July, and 30 days of punch list, but during that 30 days, we can move, so we should be in for the August start. Task of the south fork, oh, I'm blowing the whole presentation. There we go. I don't think a lot of people have seen this, but this is the actual layout of the building, very similar to the WIS building, except there's no second floor. It's everything standard on first floor. Just kind of showing you what we have. We have six small group classrooms. We have 24 regular ed or typical classrooms. Spaces, I'm not going to assign anything, that's up to the administration, but there are 24 that are available, plus 10 additional spaces, classrooms that have bathrooms in them. So if you're looking at things, you know, we're close to, that's 40 classrooms. Then we add the A up there where art is, and then you have music, you have PE, oh, there it comes, and then we have a lab room off the library. So we have all those learning spaces that can be used. So here's where the kitchen is. In your mind, you're thinking WIS a little bit. We have the cafeteria, we have the stage, we have the library. The main office and the gym switch spots. And then the front entrance, very similar. Restrooms, really important, there are 24 restrooms, three group restrooms, 21 individual restrooms throughout the building. So, you know, the hallways are quite extensive, but you've got to go, you've got a location. So. Traffic flow. We've worked really hard with the TRC on this because they require certain things. The big thing they require is down towards Watkins Road by the main entrance, they require us to put a new right turn lane in. We've worked that out. We'll be putting that in the summer. But this will be the traffic flow through TRC. Once we get ownership, we can do what we want. But this is what we've worked out with them. So parents will come in, either from the north or the south. They'll go to the south side of the building, they'll drop off, there'll be a couple entrances there for parents to let the kids off. Then after they're done, they'll cycle around. All of this is new asphalt. They'll head back out this direction to the light, or they can go down Warrior Way. Then if, you know, they're towards the end or whatever, exit two will be available. The only reason we're not having that as a primary route is because the long green band dropping off parents, you know, they, there's no stopping there. We just want to keep the flow of everything. So essentially, there shouldn't be anything on Watkins Road. In addition to this, we have a new entrance. This is not the current third entrance, that will be eliminated. They did not want us to keep that entrance, so we put a new one, a little closer to the subdivision, but in front of the building. This is where the buses will come in. And then, yes, after hours, we can open up, we're going to have a little passageway from where the parents drop off to the bus loop. So on Friday nights or big track events or whatever we might have, we'll have three exits again.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I, with it, when it comes to traffic flow, has it been discussed what happens for high school sports practices during the day when this building is still in session? Because they have to get, like, high school students drive themselves to soccer or track practice or cross-country, and all their facilities are usually straight back entrance two or old entrance three that won't exist.
Right. Yeah, entrance, what we call three now with the bus entrance, they can't come in. But entrance two is basically, we're trying to keep parents out of that, so, you know, the high school kids can either travel down Warrior Way, or they can come down, say Route 40 to Watkins, but they'll have to enter into the second entrance. And again, there shouldn't be any traffic. They should be able to go straight back. They'd have to stop at that stop sign and then cross in front of the parents.
So you're all direct these, the high school kids to come all the way out on Watkins and then turn left on to entrance two? Because if they're on Warrior Way coming from the high school to go to practice, they're, you know, my head would be like, oh, you just turn in front of the middle, current new middle school, and then turn that road that goes behind the old middle school.
Yeah, but again, yes, entrance two, but you also have to remember the timing of the school and when these things, now, let out.
Right.
The elementary is about an hour later. Now, they could change, but that should give the high school kids the opportunity to get over there.
I just was making sure, because I know, as I live right there, that these parents will line up at 1 o'clock in the afternoon to pick up their kids. They'd do it now.
Yeah. Well, if they start at 1 o'clock, then there will be a little bit more of a conflict, they will have to come in entrance two.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was being thought of. I assumed it was.
It's been thought of, but I know we have new administration at the high school. I don't think they'll have to.
It's fine.
They didn't like my jokes either. All right. Any other questions about traffic flow? Again, we had to work with the TRC. Once TRC is, we can talk about that later. But again, we can modify things. Obviously, everything's in flux. Nobody's saying anything's going to be perfect, but the plan is in place to make things work. Oh, things moved too fast. They're moving fast again. You guys like that, don't you? Okay. All right. This was the site this past summer. There's diamonds still there. Just kind of run through this because there's not a lot to show on the inside yet. We started to pour the, dig the foundations out, put some stone in. It kept increasing in size. The hallways are very, very long. You'll see that they're about 280 feet long or better. We started adding to it, and this is about two weeks ago. So a lot of work's been done. I always have a slide for motion. This gives you an opportunity to kind of look at what's going on. You can see from all different sides. The site still hasn't had all of the plumbing put in, so you will see water sitting around the site. I can click past this unless you have a question, but it's a large building. Everybody's quiet. Okay, I'll go forward then. This is another drone picture, just showing, again, the length of the hallways from just right over top of it. Again, there's about four classrooms in that section on one side, and the other side is five, whereas on the other side of that hallway would be bathrooms and small group rooms. And then as you keep moving down, on the left side, the rooms are a little bit larger. Those are the kindergarten rooms with the restrooms. And then you get basically to the cafeteria. So, that would be the eating area, the dining room on the right, the media center, lab room to the left, and further to the south or to the left would be the gymnasium. And I do turn the camera, just kind of let you see what's going on. So, that was really the big change, moving the gym to the south side for the additional parking in case they want to use that for an event. So, I'll jump through that. Another nice thing I wanted to point out is that in all of our buildings, we are moving forward with radon protection system. So, this is that system being installed. There's special rocks of certain size that are put down. There's tubes in there. So, essentially, as the radon comes up out of the ground, it's caught in those rocks. Then the tarp there basically helps keep it below the concrete, which is the next picture, they pour concrete, so then it looks like this. You got that underneath, and then all of that circulation goes to certain areas within the building and then is pumped up through the ceiling. So, pretty important. This is the detention basin, again, we have to have one. TRC requires it. Again, much unlike the other one, this is advanced. And the last slide really is, this is, again, a walk that I took one day, sent to Rick and Casey. This is just one of the wings on a very icy day. It just shows you, it takes over a minute. It took me a minute twenty-four to walk one of the hallways.
Is that where you hit your head too?
You know, just asking. Yes, I do.
Is it on camera?
Is there any sound? If you turn sound up really right now, as I'm walking through here, I have my hard hat on. It's very, very slippery, but right here, I forget to get down a little bit. Then about, past this first doorway, I decide the camera starts to shake a little bit because I started to go down. Because it's all eyes, right in there, I caught myself.
You chose to share this.
I did, in case someone wanted some laughs, so. All right, that's long enough. Any questions on things that you're doing? Okay, I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, it's great.
You're doing amazing.
Yeah, there's a lot of support and things that we need, we get from the administration. We meet every week, and there's still a lot to do, a lot to do, but things are going very, very well. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
All right, request to speak, Teamsters, Southwest Looking Education Association. Item four, approval minutes. We need a motion to approve December twenty-first and January fourth, one or both?
Motion to approve four A and B.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Number five, financial report. We need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Including agenda is the executive summary for month end December thirty-first. Really routine month, you know, we're within eighteen thousand, where we anticipate it'd be revenue-wise. And expenditures are about a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand less than we had. So, pretty much year-to-date, we're still about fifty-five thousand behind, but I anticipate that crossing over, we'll get back to, we have positive cash flow. But it was a really routine month and nothing out of the ordinary from what we expected. Glad to answer any questions you have.
Looks like we're, substitutes were up on both classified and certified?
Yes, correct. Certified was sixty-seven thousand for a partial month. Two-hundred-and-thirty-five this year versus a hundred-and-ninety-six last year.
I thought that's what I read, okay.
And then same thing for classified, nineteen thousand, eight, nine thousand so far this year. This time, last year, we were at sixty-three thousand, so yes, they're both up. Part of the reason on certified is we do have two teachers, full-time teachers that are subs, that accounts for some of the certified, yes. We have two teachers who are sub-teachers, who are teaching classes every day, so.
Okay.
And that changed. We hired one in December, and then I think the other, we still have one sub, just gonna be teaching the rest of the year.
Okay.
Are we filling subs?
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing really well. We have, how many subs right now do we have, Tanya?
What?
Wow, that's great.
Can I ask a question on the subs? How is it working out with some of the more recent high school grads in the classroom? Are they doing good or? Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Item six, we've got A through J. We need a motion to approve one or all of those?
I'll move item six, A through J, please.
Second. Any discussion, any comments?
Nothing substantial.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent, I'm sorry, Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
We have items seven, B and C, A through C actually. We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve seven, A through C.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Abstain.
It's married, yes.
Abstain.
Oh, abstain.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
And business items, let's see, there, we need motions for, well, motions for any or all of A through F.
I will motion eight, A through F. I will second.
Discussion?
So, for the policies, the co-curricular and the interscholastic, there's just a very small change. It's removing the academic component. That's required of our kids for homeschool kids, so they don't have to meet those requirements to participate, unfortunately. The public conduct is adding the distribution and dispense of drugs or controlled substances on school grounds. So, they're slight changes, nothing, nothing else. What do we have next? Oh, this is our normal agreement that Brittany will bring up to sign to approve our membership into Ohio High School. And then I'm gonna have Mr. Cullen, I don't know who is all coming up with him. You coming by yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Cullen's gonna share a few things with your, for the high school course description guide.
Good evening, everyone. I got my wrestling gear on. I'm not sure if I'm gonna catch any of the match, though.
I don't think we're gonna be that lucky.
Might be over by the time we get over there, but I just want to highlight a couple things from the, some changes for the course description guide. Most of these are pretty much verbiage changes for consistency and accuracy, but I did want to highlight a few things. We're removing the ten-dollar general fee for next year. Personal finance will be required for all students in the class of twenty-twenty-six and beyond. This will fulfill the financial literacy graduation requirement, and it will be taught as a semester course opposite American government. So, our juniors will take that. We're doing some restructuring of our ELL services to better support students from that group. We did adjust the science curriculum to create an environmental science for agriculture class. We're adding a system administration CCP course that will follow Computer Programming One. Our partnership for CCP in ELA will return to using Columbus State at the request of our CCP teachers. There is one fee increase, and that's for physics, from five dollars to fifteen dollars. The rationale for this is that the teacher that took over this year is very heavy with project-based learning, and honestly, a lot of the materials right now has sort of been a bit of a roadblock for some of the things that she would like to do. She is very, she does a good job of recycling and asking the students to bring things in to use for these projects, but it's, honestly, the student experience isn't where it could be, and she just needs some additional funds for that. That's in a nutshell it, although there are many more that I believe you already had a chance to read through. Do you have any questions for me?
I'd just say I thank you guys for reading my concerns this week about that, and I appreciate the action that was taken for some of the items. You know, the general fee, I think, is definitely a movement in the right direction, and I appreciate that. I still have concerns with the ELA fees. I think thirty dollars is entirely too high for a required course, especially considering the college credit plus courses, those students pay nothing, and just your general average student has to fork out that money. With that said, I do appreciate that the one fee that was going from thirty-five down to thirty. So, I appreciate you guys looking into that and, you know, making sure that we're, when we're asking for money, that it, you know, it truly is needed there. I still am concerned, though, however, with the Spanish one. Forty-two dollars or forty-five dollars for a workbook, to me, is a big ask, especially in an AP class. So, I was just wondering if there was, you know, any discussion as to if we could find a less expensive option or if it came with the textbook, like, with the textbook we have, if they have anything.
Yeah, we actually did remove it, okay? So, that's not included in this, as of today.
Okay, I had not seen that communication yet, so.
We're looking at some alternative opportunities for that. Not saying we may not eventually have to go back, you know, if we can't find anything else, but it's a good concern, it's under consideration.
Thank you.
Still working on it.
All right.
Work in progress. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the middle school's concerned, we didn't have a ton of wholesale changes with our curriculum guide this year. Just a few highlights, you know, elective-wise, there were just some adjustments in terms of whether something was semester-length versus year-long, and a lot of that was generated by interest level of students. We are reconfiguring and looking at some of our honors coursework. This year, we started a sixth-grade accelerated science program. The end result would be in two years to be able to offer a high school credit physical science class, you know, at the middle school level. So, next year, those students will be, that are taking it this year, will jump into the honors, the science eight classes before taking the physical science in two years. And then, again, you know, we're looking at reconfiguring some of our honors math classes specifically. A lot of that was driven out of looking at our state data and looking at where we have some gaps and some concerns. Gap closing was the biggest area where we took a hit on the state report part, and particularly in the area of gifted. And so, we're looking at how we can retool and reconfigure to try and support kids and get them, you know, on track and kind of headed in the direction that we want them to be in, to be high school-ready. So, again, I'll open up to, oh, I forgot, the high school or the honors social studies seven, that was something that has historically been offered. We ran into a couple issues with staffing, but ultimately, that's, we're just bringing that back from where it had been, I think, two years ago was the last time it was offered. Any questions?
Like before, I appreciate you guys listening to my concerns this week, and I did have, the major concerns that I had were over the middle school programming specifically with adding pre-algebra. So, essentially, in seventh grade math, we would have seventh grade math, general seventh grade math, seventh grade math honors, pre-algebra or and algebra. So, I was just wondering what the philosophy was to add pre-algebra and the data to support that addition.
Got you. I was gonna work with Mrs. LaJune up here a little bit to ask her to kind of come up and explain some of that rationale, because we've been kind of collaboratively working on this end, so she can kind of give kind of a history of this a little bit.
Good evening, I'm Ashley LaJune. My plan for pre-algebra was to offer an acceleration in the seventh grade level. And right now, the only acceleration option is algebra in middle school. In the past, this year, as Mr. Ball stated, we offered the honors six science. We also offered the honors biology in high school. So, I'm looking at acceleration, and math is one of the areas that our students do showcase typically that they are ready to accelerate and that they are ready to move up a grade level. I did start in the intermediate building in the four-five in acceleration, where we have a small group of students, there are thirteen of them, that are in a four-five acceleration class. They are taking the fifth grade state test at the end of this year. They will then take as fifth graders the sixth grade state test, and then they'll filter into pre-algebra as sixth graders in the building, is my goal. The candidates that are ready for this typically have consistent data in the ninetieth percentile and above on their benchmark data. They typically have a cognitive ability above one-fifteen. It is not limited to those things, but that is typical. We look at all of their state projections. We take teacher feedback very seriously. I ask all the teachers, even in all of the general education classrooms, I ask all their feedback. Are there candidates out there that I have not maybe pulled their data? So, we do take the process very seriously, but my goal is to have an acceleration option in seventh grade where our sixth graders can accelerate and take pre-algebra. It is compacted seven and eight curriculum where they will take the eighth grade state test. I still want to keep honors math seven because I have fifth graders who identify very late at the intermediate building in fifth grade. I give a whole grade level assessment. They are superior cognitive students who have never been placed in some of our gifted cluster classrooms or self-contained classrooms. They are new to the gifted experience. I then offer them the ability to take an honors course in middle school as honors math six. Some of them sink and some of them absolutely thrive. When I move them into seventh grade, I want them to have the option of taking honors math seven, yes, as a gifted service, but also to expose them and to give them the option of enrichment and give them all that exposure that is necessary. They are not ready for a compacted curriculum and to take an eighth grade state test.
Okay, but I would argue are all of our students ready for that. I feel like we are singling out the gifted program, and I don't know what we're doing for the general ed population. Like, I went through our numbers today, and at the middle school last year, our algebra one passage rate was ninety-eight percent. But it was explained to me through email that we had some students that there were holes in, with algebra. But I don't, at ninety-eight point six percent, I don't know that that warrants adding another class. When you look at our eighth graders last year, who also, just our general eighth grade, their passage rate on the state test was fifty-four point four. What are we adding for those kids? And then if you go to seventh grade, where we're adding this class, we had fifty-two point one percent pass. Where, what about the other forty-eight percent? We're adding a class for a handful of students, but what are we doing for the other forty-eight? Because this whole gifted thing has been an issue since I've been on this board. And there used to be, we still are seeing, it feels like we're going back to this classification system that we got rid of. When I was first on this board, when we did gifted, the kids were with the same teachers for all three years. And it just, that's just a structure that I don't like. I feel like it adds to a have and a have-not system. And by adding another class in the seventh grade where we're already only getting fifty-two percent of our general kids passing, we're now gonna have four options in seventh grade? That, to me, just seems silly. It seemed ridiculous, the data doesn't support that. If we have ninety-eight percent in our middle school passing, but our district rate is sixty-seven percent in algebra, that's school, that's middle and high school, what are we doing to get the sixty-seven percent up? What are we doing to get the fifty-two percent up in seventh grade math? What are we doing to get the fifty-four percent up in eighth grade math? I'm not hearing answers. What I'm hearing is we're adding additional classes to help a handful of kids. Well, that's not helping the majority of kids. That, that's my huge concern with this.
And I hear it, and I'm gonna let Mr. Ball or Mrs. Keen speak to some of the general education. What I want to say is when you say that there's ninety-eight percent passing algebra in middle school, a lot of those kids are accelerating. Those are accelerated kids, so I know acceleration is working for them.
But it's working- But it's working with honors math seven. Why do we need to add another course into the mix?
Not all of those kids are filtering and are being successful. That is why I want to add in that, what I'm saying is.
One, one quick thing if you don't mind. If not all those kids are being successful, how can you explain the ninety-eight percent, ninety-eight point six percent passage rate? That's success.
Absolutely, but those kids, what I guess, what I was proposing was not every single student has to be gifted to accelerate. That is not something, you are not limited to, you have to be gifted to accelerate into courses.
And I agree with that, but I feel like that is what the math seven honors takes, takes a part of. Now we're adding another class where parents used to be angry that their kid wasn't in honors class, now it's gonna be a competition of, well, my kid got into algebra, pre-algebra and, oh, well, my kid's just in honors seven. I don't, that, there's animosity there that has always been there and I don't think that we need to add that, especially given the data. That, that's my, my huge concern here and I don't get on a soapbox very much, but I am very passionate about this and I cannot support this.
I, I see where you're coming from. The one thing I wanna say is, as the gifted coordinator for the district, my whole purpose is to advocate for gifted kids. So I'm always going to promote courses that are going to accelerate them and that are going to meet them at their level.
And I appreciate.
And I am gonna let Mr. Ball talk about some of the general education and what we're doing for those students, but I do wanna say, we look at, I look at data constantly. If there are candidates that are parent referred, teacher referred, we are allowing them into courses. We absolutely are. I am not about isolating, we do not any longer have the same three teachers teaching gifted all the way through middle school. We have done a lot to spread out and I feel like the addition of this course not only supports seven and eight, a seventh and eighth grade compacted curriculum for students who are showcasing they are ready for it to filter into algebra, but leaving honors math seven will also help to support those late identified students who need enrichment, who need exposure. We have a gifted intervention specialist who can do that for them and I can still build them up. Those are underachieving students that are identified gifted, a lot of them twice exceptional, that have not had a lot of time and exposure to rigor, to challenge and to enrichment. So that is my goal and I will let Mr. Ball take over to speak to some of the general education.
No, I just had a quick question.
Sure.
You know, as we add more and more earlier, are we supporting what happens when we, when they get to junior and senior year and there is not, I'm, I'm making the assumption there's C C T and so on and so forth, an advanced placement, because if you're in geometry and, you know, eighth grade, you obviously are maxing in calculus and in sophomore year. So tell me, tell me what these junior and senior year math look like for that kid.
I, I'm gonna let Mrs. Lottois talk about all the courses in, in the high school, but I do wanna say, when we do sit down and we accelerate students, I sit in Zoom sessions with, with the students and the parents and we talk about the expectations, the G P A that they need to consider and keep when they're in the class and what the pathway looks like. We do talk about the fact that they cannot sit their junior and senior year not taking any math. They will not be successful moving on if they sat out two years without taking any math courses, so we do talk about that. Do you wanna talk about the pathways? I know.
So for students who are in honors geometry in eighth grade, the typical progression would be honors algebra two as a freshman, then we have a new course this year that, I think we have two sections of, it's A P pre-algebra, which is a really, really nice new course through the college board. It's a nice transition from a typical honors course into A P and we really are hopeful that that course is gonna prepare our kids for A P calculus A B, which is what these students will be taking their junior year. And then if we have enough student interest, we could potentially offer senior year A P calculus B C or many students choose to pursue a college credit plus option. Another course that many of our advanced math students take is A P statistics as well.
Okay, perfect. As I just wanted to make, I, I knew we were, but I wanted to make sure that we were following all the way through. I know that.
It's always the goal to make sure they are constantly taking math all the way through. One other thing I wanted to say that you had pointed out, that we're making this course exception for a small handful of students and it's not a small handful of students. We typically have two to three honors math six sections and they typically filter into two to three honors math seven and then on to algebra. When I make those changes, right now, we have seventy-six students sitting in honors math six. Out of those seventy-six, right now, after speaking with teachers, we're looking at math data, we're gonna look at math data in the spring, we're gonna talk to parents. Right now, we are looking at forty-six of those students possibly going into pre-algebra and the other kids hitting honors math seven. So it would be one course of honors math seven and two of pre-algebra. So this addition is not a small handful of kids, it would be a large handful of kids that are showcasing they are ready to advance.
Okay, so my question then, maybe this is better directed towards Mr. Ball, then why do we need honors seven? I, I don't care what we call it, I just don't think we need four options at a grade level, especially given our data. That, so, you know, whether we call it pre-algebra, whether we call it honors math seven, that's irrelevant to me. The, the goal for those kids, I'm assuming, is to make high school algebra, correct?
Right.
And our data seems to support that the system we have right now in play is working because we have a ninety-eight point six percent passage rate. So I don't understand why we are upsetting the apple cart when it's not broken. But what is seemingly broken is the fact that we have a significant number of kids who sixty-seven percent are passing generally through either high school or middle school. So I guess, you know, we're doing that.
For me, when I talk about those thirty students though, that might not be ready for a compacted curriculum, I don't feel good about not offering them a gifted service when they've been identified.
And I get that, but I don't feel good about not servicing the kids that can't pass the test either. That, that's my, my concern. I just, we worked hard to get rid of this classification system and it feels like we're adding it again and I just, I, I understand, I understand your role and I understand.
We've always had honors.
We have, but it has changed over the years and I.
Well, I don't think we would wanna put somebody who is not ready for pre-algebra in pre-algebra.
Then why would we put them in math honors seven?
Because they're not ready for that level.
One is a compacted curriculum.
One is taking a seventh grade state test, they're getting enrichment, they're working at a pace that works for them. The other is taking a seventh and eighth grade compacted curriculum and taking the eighth grade state test.
Yeah, I, I don't think we ever want to say, let's differentiate less.
But I would argue, are we differentiating for the general kids?
Well, I think.
Cause I, I feel like we're adding for this one group, but I don't see what we're doing for the other.
Thank you, Mrs. LaJune.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mrs. LaJune.
Thank you.
I think the only problem with that is, I think, I think that those scores, when you put that ninety-eight and that sixty-two, you're not comparing apples and apples. You're comparing a population that now has to take algebra one, whether, and in the past, they may have been actually allowed to be exempt from state tests. I mean, I'm speaking, you know, speaking from personal experience, my child was obviously exempted from state testing and I've been told since then that would absolutely no longer be exempted from state testing. So I think you're, you're looking at a gifted accelerated population passing at ninety-eight percent and you're looking at an entire other population that, that may never get to algebra. I mean, they may never be able, you could, you could teach them algebra all day long, every day and they're still not gonna pass that state test.
And I, I appreciate that. I just, this does not sit well with me at all. And one other quick question that I forgot to allude to before you speak. My other question was, with such a significant change, I don't know why this didn't come to the curriculum advisory committee first.
Can I, can I add something?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, I guess potentially that could also be on me. We've, historically, we've taken textbooks, like it's been a textbook and an online resource for those textbook. I don't feel like we've ever taken this sort of decision. So I read that in your correspondence, but I don't feel like we've ever had the curriculum committee take a look at curriculum like that, a pathway in depth. So if that's something we're gonna do, we're gonna have to kind of discuss what that looks like because I, I don't feel like that's something we've done historically, so I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have told Melissa and/or any of the building teams to bring that. So, I mean, that could potentially be on me.
I'm not sure, who is on the curriculum? Am I still on that?
I am.
Yeah.
It changes.
It changed two weeks ago.
Yes, it may not still be on it, but. Whenever I sit in that commit advisory group, it's typically always been a teacher coming to the, the group asking for a new textbook or a new.
Still Kathleen.
Software. Software for the textbook, yeah. And the very first thing I always say is, I'm not a professional educator, which book, which program works for you? What do you need to teach? So, you know, and then obviously we're weighing, the group is weighing the pros and cons. If the teacher says, I don't really have an opinion between this book or this book, I like them both, then we look across the board, but especially if there's a big price difference. But if the price is the same and the teacher says, I really wanna teach this book, I'm not a teacher, so I'm gonna trust that they're going to be the ones that are able to tell the group as, as the professional educator, what is best for that.
Right, and I, I under.
Which I feel like is the same sort of thing.
It, it is, but I would, especially with this gifted piece back when Dr. Ball was in charge, we had curriculum meetings and we talked about the handbook and we talked about those changes from middle school going from having the same teacher all day long to this. So to me, this was all in that same realm. So that was why I was confused as to why there was no discussion in our curriculum meeting at all and, you know, I, just learning about this through the, the draft and then the board agenda. So to me, I, this is just my personal opinion, stuff like that should come to the curriculum meeting when it's, or to the curriculum committee just as a heads up, cause to me, this is a change in programming. We're, we're now adding two different types of gifted services to seventh grade, especially when we had all those meetings prior. I don't think you were there, it was Dr. Moore at those meetings, but we had all those meetings prior about gifted. So that, that was my line of thought with that. So I, I see where you're coming from.
Yeah, I respect what you're saying.
But, yeah.
I, I just, I have to say this out loud. I know that you said it was for a small group of people. They came to us and asked if our kids wanted to take the test to see if they're pre-algebra and they didn't, they didn't make it. But after talking to different teachers and, and they actually came back and asked one of my, my child to be in it and she was, she was very successful in it. So it's not, we're not limiting, limiting to certain people. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
And I think maybe some of my angst is, it's not that what we're doing for certain people is what we're not doing for another group of people. So maybe that's a.
So talk to us a minute about regular math differentiation, Mr. Ball.
Sure, sure. Well, and I will also say this, I recognize a middle school is a tough middle round between, you know, when we go to elementary and high school and part of the high school thing that works is the self-selection piece. And we started that, you know, in eighth grade, right? You can take honors science if you want to, you can take honors social studies if you want to. And even our verbiage, if you look at the, this curriculum guide, it doesn't, as you said, limit and, you know, there is options to do that. So when you talk about like supports for, for students that, you know, are struggling, you know, to get where they're at, one of the things, you know, throughout the school year, through professional development, all of our teachers are going through closely and receive some, some form of professional development with Dr. Stoller and one of the things that they suggest quite a bit is, is double doses of instruction. And so throughout, you know, the week, there are multiple opportunities for kids to get double doses of instruction to go back, maybe some individualized attention from that end. We've also been using I X L, which is a digital program that personalizes, you know, learning for kids and we've been fortunate that we've just gotten access to Z E R N, which is another program that helps specialize and individualize where our kids at and provide some support on that end. So we're anxious to see how that, that helps on that end. Obviously, we've got our M T S S process that, you know, we use to evaluate and flag kids to see if they're struggling in certain areas and what additional levels of support they may need. And, you know, that could include after-school tutoring, we have some teachers that do that individually on their own as well. And so that, that's kind of a baseline of what you would call like tier two, you know, where we're seeing across the board. And then of course, we're focusing through our, the evaluation process on making sure our instruction is where it should be because, you know, with math, we wanna get, you know, as much one-on-one time with teachers, small group as we can. You know, a lot of teachers do a really nice job of station rotation where they're working in small groups and helping support. We're not there yet, we need to get better, that's for sure.
Yeah, we made the change, I think, across the board, K through five to the Bridges math curriculum, correct? Has that made any difference in middle school math that y'all can see as of yet or?
So we use, we use Savvas at the middle school, which we, the board purchased for us three, four years ago, three years ago. So that has helped with consistency, you know, in terms of making sure that we're, we're all on the same page. I think prior to that, it was just a digital tool that was being utilized. So one of the things, you know, when I came in, we tried to do was try to make the sixth grade day look as close to the fifth grade day as possible. And so I would say this, you know, our sixth grade scores have gone up quite a bit, they're thirteen percent above the state average and I think a lot of that has to also do with us trying to mimic that, that elementary day. So you're getting double block math, then you go to seventh and you're down to the single block. That, that matters some, but that's not the only reason why we're seeing some of those dips. So I do think that, you know, through vertical alignment, you know, we, we are seeing some, some positive growth on that end, yes. But again, we, I think multifaceted, we need to look at a lot of different things from our intervention to, you know, how we're instructing and, you know, containers.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? I can answer this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Ball.
All right. Before we vote, I'd like to, I'll just throw a motion out to see if it goes anywhere. Could we take eight D out of the lineup that we're voting on? I'd like to vote on eight D separately. The motion, as I understand it, we have eight A through F for approval, but I would, I'd like to make a motion now to take eight D out for a separate vote.
Do we need a motion of a motion? What, tell me, help me with Roberts on this, please.
Again, I think the best thing would be a motion, cause you're, the person first and second could change their motion.
I don't even know, at this point, who first and secondated that.
So Deb was first, Kathy, you were second.
Okay, so we've got, well, Mr. Vincent has a motion to thing.
Yeah, once he gets second.
I'll call for a second. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
And the vote is to pull it out as a separate vote.
Okay.
It's not to actually vote on it, just to pull it out.
Okay.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
All right, so we're pulling out, out of the separate vote, which leaves us, let's go.
We still have Ian H. to talk about.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. Mr. Jones?
So, E is basically, we have a little over a million dollars in our interest earnings from our bond issue. So what I wanna do is transfer that from our local share to our permanent, to permanent L F I to allow to use as for tangency for the various buildings. We've actually already set aside a half million dollars for Kirkersville and Mr. Janelle saying we're gonna probably need more, cause these things keep popping up. So we wanna move the entire million dollars to L F I, allocate it for Kirkersville and the new K three if we need it. So where we don't spend at Kirkersville, we'll transfer up to the K three. So this allows us to have this money. So it's same resolution we have done in the past a couple different times. Since we're nearing the end of projects, we need to spend this interest. If we don't spend it, it gets transferred in debt service. So I'd rather not spend it on doing things that we knew to make these buildings built, updated correctly without shortcuts. So that's the recommendation there. And F is basically, organizational meeting, we always approve, allow the treasurer to take property tax advances. Well, the county auditors now, they want a specific resolution passed that says, and now we gotta do it twice a year. So we gotta do it once now and then we gotta do it again in June and then we gotta mail it in twice, to them, email it in to them twice. But, so that the resolution detached, this says, we're, can read the board requesting property tax advances. This is the format they want CNN, both Leaking and Fairfield Counties. So I'm asking the board to approve that so we can get proper tax advances.
That's good.
All right.
So we have, we need, we have a motion for eight. Now will be A through C, E and F. Would you like to call the roll on that, please, Mr. Jones?
Sure. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Now we need a motion for eight D.
We need a new motion?
Do we need another motion for that, then?
Yeah, we need, because this, the motion was to just pull it out. Now we need a motion to approve it.
Correct. Motion to approve eight D.
Second.
Discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Okay, how about treasures items, nine A through C, motion to approve, donations with thank yous.
Motion to approve a nine A through C?
Second.
So A is donations, we always appreciate it. We have one that announced certificate on timing, the, received the purchase invoice before we had a purchase order. And C is removing some school buses. Two of them sold on eBay, and then one was on eBay twice, didn't sell. Reached out to the fire department, and they said they'd take it so they can practice-
That's great.
You know, safety, recovery, rescue, whatever on buses, so just ask the board to prove that.
That's a great partnership, yep.
Yep.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
All right, ten, we have request to speak on non-agenda items. Mr. Ford? We'll need you to state your name and address, and Mr. Jones will keep track. You'll have about five minutes, you'll have exactly five minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Corey Ford. I live at seven zero one Osborne Drive, Patasko, Ohio. I am going to speak tonight about board committees. We had a spirited conversation about board committees. And this board meeting has run pretty long, so I'm going to keep extremely short. I want to thank you for talking about academics today, and I want to thank you for talking about academics today. That's what we're here for. And we talked a lot today about wall color and building, new buildings. I can't tell you how thrilled I am that we actually talked about data, about academics. And standardized tests aren't everything. I hear that a lot. I agree with it. But they're not nothing either. So thank you for the conversation. I hope we see more of that in meetings like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's items.
Okay. So let's, some exciting things. These are the options for the wall attached to the preschool. So you guys need to pick an option so we can get moving on this. If you want my recommendation, once you see them, I'll give you my top two recommendation, but it's ultimately your decision, so there are, there are four options.
I already know.
I had, I had two I really liked, but-
I have two as well. Oh, yep, me too.
Anyone wanna throw out an idea?
Three or four.
Three.
Yep.
Three is-
I like three better with the lines.
I do, too.
Roger, what do you think of three? This is your-
Yeah, that's fine. It looks good to me.
Anyone opposed to three?
No.
Okay, three it is. Do you wanna, here, you wanna pass these around a little bit? People wanna see them? Yeah, here. People wanna see them in the audience. You can share them. So we're gonna go with option three if you're, if you're taking a look at these when they're passing around. That will be on the side of the preschool, so it will look really nice.
Oh, they're passing them around?
They're just passing them around. People wanna see them. In other positive news, if we don't get the snow we're expecting tonight, and we have school tomorrow, we have heat at Kirkersville. So that is-
So they'll be warm at the wedding.
Yes, the wedding will be warm. If you want additional information about heat, Mr. Tanschessky has spent an abundance of time working with our maintenance crew and is happy to provide that. I think he's learned a lot the last two days. But regardless, we have heat, so-
He's got his HVAC certification now.
Yeah, so-
Warm air.
I can't, I can't promise if we dip back down into the extreme, you know, cold, what will happen, but we have heat. So that's good news. I wanted to update you briefly on Patasko Elementary. So early next week, a survey will be going out, a collaborative survey between myself and the superintendent of the ESC, Licking County ESC, to all county superintendents. Getting a gauge for an interest in a variety of things in the utilization of that building. Unfortunately, the building will not meet the needs of CTEC, so that's not going to be a viable option for Patasko. So once we get these survey results, I'll meet again with Mr. Llewellyn from the ESC. We'll see if we have some potential viable options. We will then bring back the Patasko Advisory Group, discuss that, and then I will come back to the board with, hopefully at that time, a recommendation. So I feel like we're moving and, and we're getting closer. We just have to kind of see what the needs of the county are. Because if the county doesn't have a need to meet in that building, then we might be back to the drawing board. So I'm cautiously optimistic based on my most recent meeting with Mr. Llewellyn, so stay tuned. More information to come. Also, the task force recently met again for the second time, taking a look at, you know, growth, what's to come in the district, what's next, our highest needs. In the next couple of weeks, I'm working with Governor Miller right now on a community survey. So that'll be the next thing to go out, so we can get a gauge from everybody in the community, not just those that are participating on the task force, their thoughts and opinions on some of the areas where we're going to need additional spacing in, and just some of their thoughts and ideas that maybe the task force is missing. So that's coming next. Once we do the survey and get the survey results back, we will schedule the third task force meeting, and we'll kinda go from there. So at that, at that point, I will bring some results and, and share conversations from the task force back to the board. Any questions, anything so far? Okay, um, let's see here. I did not bring enrollment, cause it's pretty much the same. It's a two-kid difference, so nothing substantial in there. And then the compass will go out tomorrow. I'll have me a pencil here on Roger, please. So this copy of the compass, did a little highlighting of Patasko South Fork, just included some information to kinda share that I thought the community would be interested to see. As always, I'm highlighting new developments, so this, at this time, I'm highlighting Forest Ridge, the one off three-ten Hazleton with two hundred fifty-four homes, opening Phase One this spring. So kinda wanna point that out. And then the top, the big one this time, is taking a look at, once we open Patasko South Fork, the overall capacity of our buildings, district grid will be five thousand two hundred. And then the projected enrollment by the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is five thousand two hundred eighty-nine. And then again, with addition of over a thousand students within fifteen years. So kind of taking a look at projected max enrollment, ten, fifteen years, where we're at, what's to come. And I thought that was an important piece to share with the community as well. So this will go out tomorrow, and I believe that is it for me. Do you guys have any questions about any of those topics?
I do.
Yes.
I didn't think Forest Ridge was supposed to be that big.
Yes, it's going to be that big. That's confirmed.
Ugh.
Yep. Yep.
And how fast, you may have answered, how fast is that Reynoldsburg development moving? It's moving really quickly, right?
March, phase one will be open. We could have kids as early as the spring.
This spring, yes.
And that's in phases as well, but if you drive by it, I mean, yeah, it has gone up very fast. So we could have kids as early as the spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
Remind me again, is that, that's on?
The Reynoldsburg development?
Yeah.
Forty down by the agriculture building?
Okay, thanks. It's huge.
Yeah.
I never go that way, so I, I don't know.
You don't see it, yeah.
It's overwhelming.
If you drive by, you'll see how much has gone up already. Okay, and that's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Well, before adjournment, I'm gonna encourage everybody to put the ice cube in the toilet and brush the ice cube. Is the spoon under your pillow?
And pajamas inside out.
Yeah, well, I thought they were backwards.
Is that for snow day?
I have no idea.
Interesting.
I'm gonna do it. Encourage everybody else. I mean, I'm cool if it doesn't snow. I like being home by myself.
All right, how about a motion, twelve A adjournment, please?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, we are adjourned at seven fifty-nine PM.